I'm going to go ahead and call the City Council's study session for Monday, April 2nd, to order. Our first topic is a presentation for the Police Department report. Ms. Deputy City Manager.
Thank you very much. I was just noting a housekeeping item. You have new microphones, but you'll notice they're short. The long replacements are coming, so when they're on, they will light up as red. We hope that will be helpful to you. So first up tonight is a report on our Police Department. And I believe we are going to begin with a few introductions. So Chief Bennett.
Yes. So we -- good evening. Good evening. Just making sure we're all here. So we would like to start introducing our officers as they come onboard. So we have some new officers today. We will be introducing four of them at a council meeting towards the end of April. We'll introduce another five. So these are ones that have been here, you know, within the last year or so. So the first one I'd like to introduce is Detective Jennifer Herr. I know we had this conversation earlier today about -- I said, "What are you, 22? 23?" And, uh, no. So she was hired by the Sheriff's Office in 2006. And she worked for us for about a year until we had our big budget crisis and she was laid off, which is the first time that it ever happened in some 20, 30 years. So she was hired by Tacoma Police, which is a nice, quiet area. She worked there for a year. And then she decided to come back to King County. She worked patrol at Precinct 4, Burien, White Center, Skyway, and then became a detective in 2016. And then we stole her. I mean, we appropriate -- we got her. So she's been here since June of '17, and we are very happy to have Jennifer Herr.
Thank you.
Yeah. Next, we have Sergeant Christine Elias. Christine and I were speaking earlier today. She was hired in 1995, when she was four. And so she's been on the department quite some time now. She's worked every precinct: 2, 3, 4, so north, southeast, Burien. And then she was a detective out at Precinct 3, correct? Until she was selected by the Sexual Assault Unit. So Detective Elias, now Sergeant Elias, was in our premier sexual assault unit downtown Seattle, covering all of King County for 15 years. And after 15 years, she said, "I just want to come to Samamish." I mean, she was promoted to sergeant, and we stole her. So she also runs our PTO program, which is our Police Training Officer Program. She runs our Reserve Program. She runs our -- or is the mid-level manager in our new Explorer Program. We keep her really busy. So currently, you'll see her a bit because she's filling in for Sergeant Carlson, whose husband is having surgery in a couple days. And we'll be out -- she'll be out for at least six weeks. So Christine Elias is going to be our new Admin Sergeant on day shift, so you'll see her around. And I'm going to let her introduce her two new graveyard people. She normally is graveyard patrol.
Okay. This is Deputy Marco Russo. He's been with the Sheriff's Office since August of 2017 and is currently assigned to graveyard shift in Samamish. She just started, what, a couple weeks ago? Yeah, it's been two weeks. So we're still getting to know each other. He's sort of a lateral from Las Vegas and did -- spent five years with Las Vegas in law enforcement down there. He's married -- getting married in September, and we're lucky to have him on our shift. He brings a lot of experience with him. And then we have Deputy Ian Campbell. He is -- worked at SCORE before he came here approximately a year ago. Was it April? Yeah, in April. And is just starting. His first day is tomorrow with us. So he'll be on our swing shift, so you're 16 -- or 4:00 PM to 2:00 AM. And he's married and has a 10-month-old. So he's going to be tired. So that's it. Thank you.
There you go.
Oh, I just kept pushing buttons till it worked. Okay, so we're going to do our Police Department report. We try to do this at least once a year. And here in this pretty photo, you have all of our officers as of December of 2016. So it's a little bit old, but it took a while. It took about 11 months to get this picture sent to us. So a little bit of overview for the Samamish Police Department. We have 30 total commissioned officers. That includes one Police Chief, one Administrative Sergeant, three Patrol Sergeants, two Master Police Officers, and three Detectives. Now, the Master Police Officers and the Detectives, and you'll see on the next slide, a couple other folks, all count against minimum staffing. So they're not separated positions that -- I'm sorry, the Detectives don't. But the Master Police Officers do count as part of our minimums. We have School Resource Officers in Skyline and Eastlake, one each. Kenny Williams and Nick Greard are our two School Resource Officers. We have Traffic Officers that handle enforcement, DUI, commercial vehicle enforcement. They also do our prisoner transports. Technically, we have five Traffic Officers right now, but there's only three that are paid for as true FTEs. The other two have ancillary duties, and all five have ancillary duties of patrol, so they count against our minimums. So in theory, we don't have a ton of just true patrol officers that are out enforcing the laws, but we combine the Traffic Officers and the Corporals, and sometimes the Sergeants and myself, to help augment patrol. We currently have three Patrol Officers. They're required to spend 20 hours a month doing patrol duties. So they support officers on calls. They can do some community policing activities. They're trained like a regular officer, but it can take three to four years before they can actually ride in a car by themselves. Usually, they have to be with another officer. And then we have one full-time civilian administrative assistant, who is Elena Hall, who is actually our former SRO. She was with the Sheriff's Office for 17 years and decided she'd like to come into the administrative world. So we've had her for about seven months now. So as far as staffing goes, we have a three-officer minimum. So we currently -- and I'll show you here in a second what our patrol districts look like. But we currently have three patrol districts, and we have a three-officer minimum. So one for each patrol district. In 2000 -- at the beginning of 2017, we switched from our 5-2-5-3 schedule to a rotating 4-10. And the reason we did this, and you'll see in some slides coming up, is our peak call hours are between about 4:00 PM and midnight. And so with the rotating 4-10 schedule, we're able to augment those hours to have more officers working during that time. But then, of course, that results in fewer officers working at some of the other times. So on some of the peak call times with this 4-10 rotating schedule and what we call power shift officers, we can have two to three additional officers working during those peak times, but then, again, two fewer officers at other times. So officers in general patrol staffing take days off or are not present for patrol for things like vacation, sick leave, family sick leave, parental leave. Sometimes we have retirements. We have training, mandatory training. So any of these absences often for us in City of Samamish to keep a three-officer minimum causes backfill overtime. So we pay overtime to have somebody get us up to that level of three. This picture is actually taken at the Chinese New Year at the new Central Washington University Campus, in coordination with the YMCA. So a little bit about our demographic comparables. So as far as population by city, we're pretty much neck and neck with the City of Redmond. Again, comparables are interesting, you know, with population, daytime population. And then you look at geography and how spread out we are. So our public safety cost per capita is of 2017. As you can see, we pay the least amount for public safety. And I'm assuming you guys have already looked at all these documents, so I'm just going through them. Okay. So our contrast cost per capita over time has remained relatively the same, a little bit less from last year to this year. Our number of sworn personnel is the least of all of these comparable cities. We're at about .5 per thousand. A national average for unincorporated areas or Sheriff's Offices is generally 1.5 per thousand, and for municipal cities is usually 2.5 per thousand. So we are at .5 per thousand. So again, the fewest number of sworn personnel per thousand residents. As far as cost per sworn by city, we're pretty average with another contract city can more. Redmond pays quite a bit more, as does Kirkland, Carnation, Bothell, Isicaw. So our cost is in line with surrounding cities. So moving on to police call data. Do you want me to take questions at each section or at the very end? Okay.
Yeah, nothing written this time.
Okay. Woo! So these are our districts: the Ocean 1, 2, and 3. The way we made these districts is we contacted our computer-aided dispatch program, Geocoding folks. And what they did was, they did a study to try to see, for the GEO code blocks, how we could most even out the districts. So if there's, you know, 3,000 dispatch calls for service a year, we tried to get 1,000 in the Ocean 1, 1,000 in the Ocean 2, 1,000 in the Ocean 3. So to try to make them very comparable for the district officers. So that's our three-car minimum. So our on-view calls for service. So on-view means self-initiated activity, like a traffic stop, or an area check, or a suspicious person that the officer stumbles upon and goes out on his own as an on-view. Dispatch calls for service are your 911 calls. So our dispatch calls for service have steadily increased over the years. Our self-initiated field activity jumped dramatically when we added Kohani. When we added Kohani, we also added a number of brand-new officers who are very excited to go out and conduct police work. So some of those brand-new officers have now moved on to CTAC and some of these other busy cities where they can get buried in paper calls, and if they have time, they can do a traffic stop. So our calls have gone down a little -- or, sorry, our self-initiated activity has gone down just a little bit, but that's also saved some costs in our driving while suspended calendar for the courts.
Chief, we do have a question up here. Councilmember Valderrama.
Going back to that slide, the last Public Safety Committee had asked, and I'm still interested to know, what caused that jump from 2015 to 2016? Because Kohani alone doesn't reflect that. And so that's -- I don't know if you've been able to delve into a little bit more, why is there so much more of the on-view self-initiated activities? Is this a different philosophy that's been implemented, or what's been causing that?
So you're saying I came in '16 and saying I caused it? No. Maybe a little. No, we -- so Kohani was definitely a jump for us. It was a huge addition of area and some multifamily housing, so that's going to cause additional calls and additional on-views. Additionally, we did have a lot of brand-new officers in our city at that time, and we had an inordinate amount of driving while suspended tickets written. So that accounts for some of our on-views. Two or three of those folks have moved on to Precinct 4. So, you know, you're going to see a little bit of drop based on what the officer likes to do with their uncommitted time.
Yeah, but it doesn't proportionally. That's why I say this is much greater than the proportion that Kohani is here. That's why the last Public Safety Committee and myself were still wondering. This is a pretty significant jump beyond the 10,000 that we got from Kohani. So I'd be curious to know if we -- if there was a different approach or philosophy with these new officers, that's understandable, but it...
Well, I will say that when I came into the city in October of 2016, I mandated that all officers had at least two on-views a night. So that was a mandate that I issued. So I wanted to make sure that uncommitted time was used wisely.
Well, that I understand, but it drops from when you came in, in 2016. It's slightly dropped, but the big jump was from 2015 to 2016, and then it's been leveling down slightly. And so, in any case, just an observation as we go on and look at trends, it'll be interesting to look at. Thanks.
Other questions? Okay, so our average response times to high-priority calls. So I would say due to our 4-10 rotating schedule that we implemented at the beginning of 2017, that resulted in our peak call times. You know, if you have five officers working versus three officers working, you're going to see a faster response time to some of those Priority X calls. So Priority X would be one of those, you know, robbery in progress, you know, assault in progress, a high-priority crime. So I'm happy to say that with that rotating schedule of 4-10s, we have had a little bit more staffing during some of those Priority X calls. We didn't have very many calls. I think we had four or something like that altogether for 2017. So our Priority 1, Priority 2 calls, you know, Priority 3 specifically, our times are increasing for how long you have to wait before it's dispatched or we send an officer. And I can give you lots of anecdotal information where we just have had nobody to go. We haven't had the staffing to send people on calls. I'm not allowed to touch this ever again. Hold on. Jeez. Okay. Hands over here. So dispatch calls for service by time of day. I alluded to this a little earlier in my presentation about peak times. Some best practices for policing are the rotating 4-10 schedules where you staff up during peak service time. So that's what we did. Again, we have dropped down to two officers a few times during the non-peak times, based on, you know, you only have so much staffing. So we started paying overtime anytime we dropped down below those three, because it just wasn't safe. So there's a lot of backfill overtime that came from that. So I wanted to give you just a quick snapshot visually of how calls are increasing over time. And this is pre-Kohani to post-Kohani. So you can see sort of the cluster increases of calls. The other purpose of this particular slide is to show you the sheer distances you can have. Kohani being in that bottom right-hand corner. So a lot of call load data. Again, that might answer some of your questions, Councilmember Valderrama. So, you know, we could have calls way in the north end of the city and a ton of calls in the south end of the city. And, you know, if your -- three cars are working, you have a domestic violence in progress that mandates a two-officer response, then you get a two-car accident, you have one person to go to that. So that's where we start getting jammed up, where you have all these other calls coming in and no staffing to go. We do have cross-dispatching with the Sheriff's Office, so if they are available, they can be dispatched into the city. So Priority X dispatches. So these are the clusters. Sorry, it was 11. So there were 11 of these priority calls: silent alarm, commercial, robbery, suspicious circumstances. And this map delineates where those occurred for those Priority X calls.
Excuse me, we've got another question up here. Councilmember Stewart.
I'm sorry, if you can go back to the previous slide, just to make sure I understand. So these are all calls, right? So these aren't the self-initiated...
These are dispatch calls for service, and they are clustered, so you may have a dot with a whole bunch more than one call.
So this does show that call volumes, even outside of Kohani, are definitely increasing.
Correct.
I mean, it's visual, so there aren't any numbers associated with it, but it looks like fairly substantially.
Correct.
Okay, thanks.
So calls holding, that's one of those sort of level-of-service things that we bring up in the city. How long does it take for an officer to get dispatched to that call? What's the average hold time? So Priority 4 calls are things like park checks or phone messages. Priority 6 calls are 911 hang-ups. So the main one we look at is this about 10-minute wait time for your Priority 3 call, which is vandalism or larceny or something like that. So this is just a visual of how long you can expect to wait for some of these things to be dispatched. So a little bit of Samamish police crime data. I'm going to go through Part 1 crimes right now, and then we'll do a little bit on Part 2 crimes. So for Part 1 crimes, our Part 1 crimes per thousand residents has remained relatively static.
Chief Bennett?
Yes.
Could you go back to the previous slide and make sure everybody understands what a Part 1 crime is?
I sure can. Part 1 crime is, we sometimes call them our BARK felonies, so burglary, arson, robbery, kidnapping. So burglary, larceny, motor vehicle, arson, homicide, rape, robbery, aggravated assault. So these are your more serious crimes, and that's a Part 1 crime rate. Okay. Again, remain relatively static over the last four years or so, at about eight Part 1 crimes per thousand residents. So 64,000 residents. I'm not a math whiz, but there's probably some math in there. Where's Hornish? He's...
He's on the phone.
Wait, you're a math whiz, too.
I am, I am. Do you want me to do the math?
Yeah, please.
So eight times 64. Really? I got to do that in front of everybody?
No, you don't. Only if you really want to. Is that 480?
About 500.
Yeah, 480. All right.
Let the record know that I'm glad I'm not there.
Thank you.
I got it covered, Tom.
I would have totally dimed you out. So one of our more significant calls that has gone up is homicide counts per year. We had three homicides last year. We had one homicide in 2014. So we are seeing some increase in serious crimes.
Chief Bennett, real quick. So there was one on 244th. Is that all three, or does that include the one at Beaver Lake?
The Beaver Lake was in January, and then the...
Of '17?
Of '17.
Okay, okay. Just, okay, so those are all, okay.
So rape and robbery. I'm going to talk a little bit more about the rape crimes when we come to juveniles here in a minute. Robbery, so we had one instead of three last year, which is good. So we had some reduction in robbery calls. And again, I'm touching that. I'm really sorry. Try not to do that. We've seen an increase in arson calls. We have great arson investigators through the Sheriff's Office contracting, and we tend to catch a lot of the folks that are committing those arsons, which is awesome. Our burglaries have increased slightly from last year to this year. We have been doing as much as we can, you know, please close your door, shut it, lock it, lock your front door, lock your car doors, don't leave things visually in sight. Our larcenies have remained relatively static. We've seen our vehicle thefts increase. A lot of times, those vehicle thefts, anecdotally, tend to -- the person who stole the car now comes in the stolen car to commit more crime. That seems to be a pretty common. In fact, that was happening today as well. So Part 2 crimes, that's pretty much everything else. So I won't belabor what the crimes are, but I'll give you a quick snapshot of some of those crimes here in these next slides. So some of the Part 3 -- or, sorry, Part 2 crimes have to do with drugs and paraphernalia. So the pictures you see here before you are all pictures from Samamish cases. Somebody with a needle fetish down there in the bottom right-hand corner. So we do have a fair amount of drug and narcotic-related activity here in the City of Samamish. So some selected Part 2 category crimes. So drug crimes increased slightly from last year. Juvenile drug crime persons decreased slightly. DUIs, relatively static. We did have last week, somebody involved in a DUI accident who was .4O alcohol level. We had three last year that were over .25 in a one-week period. So we do have some alcohol issues. Juvenile DUI has gone up a bit. Our sex crimes have gone up. And most startling to me is the juvenile sex crimes have increased dramatically. That's something I've been talking about in our Healthy Communities Coalition meetings. So having those healthy relationships and boundaries are important things to talk about. Domestic violence has gone up a little bit. Vandalisms have gone down. So you can see sort of over the years what those crimes look like since 2015. So a little bit about traffic and accident data. Anecdotally, since I've been here in the city, I would say probably the number-one complaint I hear about is traffic, speeding, vehicles, things at intersections, roadways, education, engineering, enforcement, and so on. So our car accidents have increased and continue to increase over years. Our traffic tickets, the host or the majority of those traffic tickets are infraction tickets, and generally, those are speeding tickets. So over 2,800 of those written. Criminal traffic are things like driving while suspended or DUI. So again, the majority are infraction traffic tickets. A little bit about our work plan for 2018. So we continue to gather data related to drug enforcement, drug enforcement programming. We have, and I'll show you here in a second, the Hidden in Plain Sight event coming up here this month. Traffic enforcement, we continue to work with the Liquor Control Board to do stings. I think last year, we found five businesses not in compliance. We'll focus on school zone safety continually and speed control. We, at the Public Safety Oversight Committee meeting coming up this Thursday, will again talk about fireworks enforcement and what we can do. We continue to have our package theft and vehicle parole education enforcement. We did our package theft emphasis again over Christmas, from 2015 to 2016, when we did our first package theft Christmas time emphasis. And the media came out and did some ride-alongs and stories. We had a 30% reduction in package theft, so that was a pretty good statistic. Community programs like school and community outreach, human resources outreach, and diverse community outreach are very important to the City of Samamish Police Department. We try to participate in those types of outreach whenever possible and as staffing allows. We have our very first police volunteer that started this last month, actually. He's a retired police officer from, I think, Colorado, and a senior citizen that'd like to spend some of his time donating his time to the Police Department. So we're getting him trained right now, and Sergeant Carlson did a great job writing a volunteer manual. So we have some city events coming up, 4th of July. We just did the extravaganza. Anybody here go there besides me? There's quite a host of, I would say, over 3,000 people, up to 5,000 people. We have National Night Out Against Crime coming up on August 7th. May 19th is our Riga Palooza, and of course, we all know when Halloween is. Disaster preparedness fair is generally in September. Very merry Samamish in December. The Police Department is committed to try to go to all of these events. Our Explorer Program is ramping up with Jennifer Herr at the helm, so we should have three Explorers by next month.
Our first meeting is this week.
This week? This week? Yeah, next month, April, yeah. Our ancillary work programs, we currently have three reserves. We had four. Andrew Tilton decided to get hired full-time by the Sheriff's Office, which we'll never forgive him for, but we're hoping to snatch him back here to the City of Samamish once he's off probation. Our Explorer Program, again, Officer Herr and Officer Greard are leading the charge in that. We hope to have a couple of them go to our Summer Academy, and we'd like to ramp up to between 15 and 17 Explorers. Those are all volunteers. They donate thousands of hours to any city and community event, and it involves our youth and law enforcement programs, which is a fantastic mentorship possibility. We're working on publications and social media. The Police Department doesn't have a true PIO or Media Relations person. We use Kelly Stickney, who does a fantastic job at the city. We do our best, and we will continue to do our best, getting out on Twitter and Tweeter and Twister, whatever, all of those, Facebook, social media. There's so many more. But we'll get out there and continue on those social media websites. We are doing Alice and ASAP Run, Hide, Fight training in our schools. I just went to the Lake Washington School District Community Safety Forum. Several of you were there as well. And we're going to be doing the same thing with Isicaw School District.
Can you remind everybody what the Alice or ASAP programs are, please?
Fantastic question. So active shooters, active shooters in schools. Alice and ASAP are, they're just a little bit different. Run, Hide, Fight is more of an ASAP function. Alice, you're basically identifying threats and exits and so forth. We can do, I think it's, the Lake Washington School District uses Alice, and the Isicaw School District uses ASAP. But honestly, they're both great programs that just teach kids about, you know, lockdowns, hiding in place, or, you know, the best way to get out of a school shooter situation. And we have all the equipment we need through a grant before I came here. We have ASAP vests and helmets and so forth. And we're really, really focusing on doing additional ASAP training this year in the actual schools that are here in Samamish. We will be working, as staffing can allow, if we have the staffing, to do a live drill, a live ASAP drill or Alice drill in the high schools. It's a lot of work, requires a lot of manpower or woman-power. It requires a lot of time to put together and a lot of coordination, so we're going to continue to work towards that. We also have our Healthy Communities Coalition, which is, several of you have attended those meetings. So our, we are in collaboration with the Human Services Commission to look at the top issues facing Samamish, which happen to be, besides traffic and affordable housing, things like cultural diversity outreach, domestic violence and healthy relationships among youth, teen drug and alcohol, and of course, last but not least, suicide prevention, mental health, mental wellness among our youth, which statistically significant would be the levels of anxiety among Samamish youth in our Healthy Youth Survey. So something really important for us to address in this community. So we have meetings every two months, and the idea is to take all of these helping organizations, of which there are 30 or 40, some of whom have cross purposes, and take all of that energy, put it into one ball of energy, and have a synergy moving forward to address those issues, not just a one-time thing, but each year. So really excited about partnering with the community. The city is obviously our sponsor, and it's just an incredible thing to see these people get together and start to address these issues. Hidden in Plain Sight is coming up April 16th from 6:30 to 8:30 at the Central Washington University Samamish Campus. Hidden in Plain Sight, oh, Officer Travers is here. That's you, right there on that picture, Officer Travers. No, yeah, no, I know that's you. He was instrumental in actually buying that drug kit. He researched it, found who sold it and ordered it, and we were able to, you can't really see because the case is to the front, but it's different types of drugs, what they look like, what paraphernalia looks like. It's a great educational tool. So this Hidden in Plain Sight basically shows parents, hey, you know, you walk into your kid's room and you see, you know, false-bottomed containers or flags with marijuana leaves on them, or whatever you might, "Oh, that's a pretty plant. I'm so glad they're into botany." You know, it's things that get our parents really aware of what's happening in our children's bedrooms. or whatever you might, oh, that's a pretty plant. I'm so glad they're into botany. You know, it's things that get our parents really aware of what's happening in our children's bedrooms. So you'd be surprised what the paraphernalia looks like or what is really Hidden in Plain Sight. So it's a fantastic program. So we will be there on April 16th. We're continuing with our Homeless Care Kit initiative. Each Sammish officer has at least two homeless care kits in the trunk of their patrol cars because our purpose is, as we come across those that are homeless, is not to be punitive or punishing. We're here to help. So we hand out those kits that have non-perishable item, food and drink, gloves, mittens, hats, socks, and hygiene items. So we're there to help. A couple of other things coming up next year. At the second week of January, we'll again do the Eastside Public Safety Forum for hate crimes. And this has to do with all the Eastside chiefs that come together. And it's a very well-attended forum. We also have the Neighborhood Picnic that the Sammish mosque is putting on and a community open house on Saturday, April 29th, starting at 1:00 p.m. So there's really a push to open the doors through our mosque to invite citizens in to share and partake in food and talk, get to know each other. Again, April 29th coming up. I have to weave in pictures of my children here, but the council also. And my eight-month-old is now addicted to coffee, as you can see in that bottom right-hand picture. So we're starting them young. So if anybody has any questions, I do want to say we were voted the number-one safe city. But I do want to caveat that again, that we're still using UCR Uniform Crime Reporting Data, not NiBRS, which most folks have moved to. So again, it's just an education piece. When we do move to NiBRS, we're going to see a huge jump in our numbers, maybe doubled. But that's to be expected.
When will that be?
Questions? 2020, 2019, 2020.
Councilmember Valderrama.
Yeah, thank you again, Michelle, for the presentation. A great presentation and a lot of information that you've given us. I do take into account that you have the different system of measuring the data. But at the same time, we've had the static information, as you call it, the eight per thousand for the crime. So hopefully, that'll serve us well so that we continue to win that award. The one thing that was a gripe with the last council and the council before that, and it's one that continues, is the fireworks. The fireworks, where I don't believe we've written a ticket in four or five years, and that...
We wrote one last year.
Oh, why, okay. That's been a huge frustration with citizens. We get lots of emails that are angry. We keep saying it's a $1,000 fine, and then we come back empty-handed. And frankly, for a number of years, council has been saying of canceling both the initiative on it. Then last year, you know, there was the issue says, where is it? We say, hey, just go to Pine Lake, go to Beaver Lake, go to Lakes of Mammish, the same houses every year. We know where they are. Then you went and we re-categorized the type of crime it is now. So didn't we just make it into a...
No, we have a Public Safety Oversight meeting coming up this Thursday to discuss that. But we haven't done any re-categorization yet.
I can update on that. The ordinance that will amend our ability to enforce fireworks violations is coming back to the council in May.
Okay, so that's when we're going to re-categorize or classify it so that we can actually go into somebody's house because the frustration for past councils, myself, and unanimously on the past Public Safety Committee, was we're tired of writing checks and then not seeing this. And citizens are screaming off the roof because they're calling in, including Tom Odell. Tom Odell was saying, I call in the same house every year and you never ticket the person. I'd give you the address of it. So that frustration's got to end or else we got to kill that program. So just putting it out there. Thank you.
Thank you. I will say, we did attend those places where we know they are every year and had doors shut in our face and told to get out and go away.
And that's the reclassification that we're now doing. But it took us four or five years to know that. And so that's what, as council members, we're frustrated because it's the same letters keep coming to us. We tell you every year, and now we're being told it's a reclassification. We should have known that four years ago.
I've only been here a year and a half, but I'll do my very best.
Understand.
Any other questions? We're letting you off easy.
That's it? We have subjectmatic experts in the audience, too. So if you have... Thank you very much.
Michelle, before you sneak off, did you want to introduce Anita, who's in the audience back there?
Oh, yes, I do. Anita Claus, will you stand up? She hates this. In fact, she almost made me promise not to do this if she came. But here she is. Anita Claus works downtown in our King County Contracting Unit. So she is the number cruncher. And she prepares a lot of this data that you see here as far as financials and comparables, where our Crime Analysis Unit does the crime data. So I worked with Anita for a long time. She's top-notch and really good at what she does. So we're happy that she's here today.
I'm going to craft a question really quick before you run off.
Of course.
Okay, so your Explorer program. How are you reaching kids to let them know that it exists?
Would you like to talk about that, Officer Herr?
Could you go to...
Come up to the mic. That way, it gets captured.
She's so glad she stayed.
Okay, so my partner, Officer Gryard, is one of the school resource officers. He's the one for Skyline. And then we're working as well with Officer Williams at Eastside. And so they're really forefront in the effort of recruiting. I guess, so we have two that are ready to start. And they actually came to Officer Gryard asking for this program. And so that's why it began to be developed. They have since, as they are, you know, exciting teens, you know, and are excited about this program, have started to recruit others. And so we're getting a snowball effect already kind of started before we even had our first meeting. It's very exciting.
That's good.
So anything else I can answer quickly?
No, I would certainly hope that that would be a successful program here.
Yeah.
We think it will be. We have a lot of interest. It's just a matter of finding the excellent advisors we have found who have put heart and soul into it. And we're already getting the uniforms and getting everything ready to roll and getting the academies. And we're really excited to bring the program back.
That's when it'll snowball, when they start seeing their friends out in uniforms. I want to do that.
Yep.
Good. I don't see any other questions.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so our next topic is the Police Services Study kickoff. This is Deputy City Manager.
Yes, well, we will let our crew transition here. You may recall, we've just recently awarded a contract for the Police Services Study. This is the first time in city history that we've done a long-term look at police services. And I will let Mike Sugg get settled here. Mike Sugg is here. He's the Management Analyst in the City Manager's Office. And he will introduce our consultants from Burke. And then they will get underway with their presentation. Mike?
Thank you, Jesse. And good evening, Mayor, Council, and Deputy City Manager. My name is Mike Sugg. I am the Management Analyst out of the City Manager's Office. And I am joined tonight by two folks from our consulting team from Burke Consulting. And we have Brian Murphy, who is our Project Director on this Police Services Study, and Kristin Mate, who is our Project Manager. And so basically, what we're here tonight to do is introduce the Police Services Study. And in a nutshell, this study is a comprehensive review of our police department. We're going to look at the operational side, the organizational side, and ultimately develop some recommendations that will help to align our police services better with the needs of our community. And basically, staff's hope for this project is that we come through with a deliverable that is useful to both the council and the police department to help make some decisions about the future of our police services in the city. So Kristin and Brian have prepared a presentation. And so I'll turn it over to them.
Great. Thank you, Mike. Good evening, Madam Mayor and Members of Council, Deputy City Manager. We're very pleased to be here tonight. I think Mike has summed up the project nicely. We're here tonight to really launch our discussion by telling you a little bit about our scope of work, the key issues that we want to, that we're asked to look at, and most importantly, engaging you and getting some input from you about specific questions you'd like us to look at over the course of the study, and also the role that you'd like the Public Safety Committee to play over the course of our work. So just a little bit more about us and about the project. So I'm a principal at Burke. Burke is a public policy consulting firm. We focus on work for the public sector, work for the public good to help communities do a variety of municipal services as well as they can. I'll be serving as the Project Director, supported here by Kristin Mate as Project Manager. Kristin, do you want to say hello?
Good evening. I'm Kristin. I'm an associate at Burke Consulting. Some of you may recognize me because I also had the chance to work on the Health and Human Services Needs Assessment for the city. I will be the Project Manager for this project. I'm really excited. I had a chance to work with the Kirkland Police Department prior to this on a similar study. And we're excited to do it again for Sammish.
Ben Silver there will also be helping us as supporting analyst. And he's a GIS analyst as well. And one of our plans, he also worked actually on the Human Services Needs Assessment, is to leverage that information as well as we can and not repeat any of that additional analysis. So Burke's role in the project is really to focus on the changing demographics and changing conditions within the region and within Sammish, and to do service demand modeling and financial modeling of that, and to look at different options you have in front of you, whether to maintain the contract with the county, to refine that contract, to consider other options as well. Perhaps a city independent department or a partnership with others. And we want to look at those options and bring those back to you. But throughout that work, we will be supported by our team of law enforcement specialists here, the husband-and-wife team, Virginia and Tag Gleason, Thomas A. Gleason, otherwise known as Tag. The four of us, Kristin and Virginia and Tag and I, were the core team on the Kirkland Project. We work very well with Virginia and Tag and are pleased to have them with us on our team. Virginia has been, she was with the city of Seattle as the Chief Strategic Advisor from 2014 to 2016. Prior to that, she was with King County Sheriff's Office as a Standards Manager and worked with the city of Sammish in that contract. She's now down in Oakland, but will be available to us. She'll be in front of council in future discussions. And then Tag is a captain over the communications work within the city of Seattle again, and has been there at the city for 36 years. So together, they bring just a wealth of knowledge. And Tag, just to say a little bit more, his focus is really on culture and on community police relationships, particularly raising a lot of information in personnel and HR and internal systems.
Got it.
All right. So let's just pause a moment and ask sort of this question of why a Police Services Study. So your city has partnered with the county since incorporation in 1999. This is the first study of its kind. And it's really a chance to step back and look at how that arrangement is working, to look at how the city is working with the county, how your own department is functioning, and see whether your resource levels are aligned with demands for you, whether your priorities are aligned with the community's priorities, and whether you're providing the service as efficiently and as effectively as possible. So as Mike said, it's really quite a thorough study that you've asked for, and we'll be looking at all aspects of the department's functioning. So a lot has happened since incorporation. And certainly, growth is one of those things. Your population has nearly doubled since incorporation. And that, of course, includes the annexation in 2016. Your law enforcement resources on a per capita basis have largely remained the same with some additions for traffic enforcement and then the bump that came with the annexation. So certainly, we'll be looking at that and your ability to provide coverage across a pretty broad geography. As well, the makeup of the community is changing. And this is work that we'll leverage from the Human Services Needs Assessment. We want to make sure that your policing services are aligned with community expectations, that they're accessible, that they're welcoming, that they're in touch with that changing community. And then physically, your community has changed as well.
I think we've got a question up here. Councilmember Valderrama.
Yeah, if you could go to that slide there. You have the demographics and the community needs are changing. By community needs, is this dealing with events? Or what does community needs that have changed?
Sure, so I'd say it's too early for us to say. I think that the population is changing. The nature of crime may be changing in Sammish. And the types of demands for public safety services are changing. And so we want to understand that, and we want to look at that. And maybe it's too early to say that they're changing. We haven't actually gotten into the data yet. But we want to look at how is the changing makeup of the community possibly impacting demands on services.
Okay, thank you.
So geographically and in terms of the physical form of the community, we're also seeing change, obviously. So your geography has expanded with the annexation. Your town center is under development and will bring additional retail space, additional office space, and new types or a variety of housing types. And some of that is dense housing as well. So the question here, and this is the question, really, we should have had on the previous slide, is how will this change impact the department? We need to pause and ask that question. And we don't have an answer just yet. But that's, those are some of the central questions that we want to look at. So really, I hope we all go into this. And we've had good discussions with Chief as well about this is an opportunity to learn. It's an opportunity to step back and look at what's happening nationally. And we know, obviously, that this is a tense time elsewhere in the nation in terms of relationships between communities and police. And we want to be aware of that. We want to look at what's happening in the region. We want to look at technology changing and use of data, use of body-worn cameras and the like. We want to look at changes in regulations and policy from marijuana to changes in sentencing policy and the like, and how all of that may ripple through and cause different changes for your department to react to. for your department to react to. We'd like to bring a look at what's happening elsewhere in the region, how other departments are responding to these kinds of changes, and bring you back options and recommendations for you to consider as you go forward.
Great. So I'm going to walk you through some of the key tasks that we've identified as well as our planned project schedule. So really, we just want to kind of summarize the key context and what's going on in Samamish right now, what's been changing over the last few years, and kind of look at what some of the information Michelle just, or Chief Bennett just presented, and understand how that might impact services going forward. We're definitely going to be engaging you through a series of meetings. We'll ask you in a little while how we should engage the Public Safety Committee. We'll be doing a virtual town hall with community members to better understand their priorities for policing. We'll be doing some one-on-one interviews with police department staff, as well as some group shift meetings with both patrol officers as well as sergeants. And we'll be doing some focus groups with other key stakeholders like the Healthy Communities Coalition, as well as some internal departments like Public Works and Parks and Community Development to see what their views are on how the community is changing and how police can help support that. So we'll be doing a lot of analyzing as well. We're going to be looking not just at administrative systems and management capacity, which can include things like how officers are communicating internally, how communication is working in the hierarchy in the department, as well as how the department's using technology. We'll also look at resource levels, deployment and performance. This really kind of looks more at how the department is responding to calls for service, how the new shift schedule is working, if it's a good fit for the department and the volume of calls, how the overtime use is working that Chief Bennett alluded to, and just kind of better understand the impacts from your past growth. We'll also really be digging into the contract terms with King County. This is something where Virginia can really bring a lot of knowledge to our team. She used to work on drafting these contracts with the contract cities, so we think she'll be able to add a lot of value there. We'll also be seeing how that compares, as Brian mentioned, to potentially starting your own department or partnering with a neighboring city for police services. We'll also be looking at a lot of how different laws and regulations might be changing or anticipated to change in the future and what impacts that might have on the city. One example of that in the past was the legalization of marijuana and how that changed police services. And in the end, we'll hope to bring some options forward to you. We plan to come back to you both in July and September, down in the green Phase 3, to kind of help inform your budget development, even though our final report won't be finished until the end of the year. So this is our project schedule. We're really in Phase 1 right now. We've started collecting some baseline data, and we've set up some of the internal stakeholder engagement meetings. We're starting to draft our virtual town hall survey. And then we will be summarizing all of our work from Phase 1 into an existing conditions report, which we hope to deliver at the end of July. And we'll definitely have key findings from that to share with you on your July 10 meeting. That kind of works into Phase 2 and Phase 3. We'll really be looking at how your demand for services might be changing in the future and how the department can react to that in an appropriate way.
We've got a question up here. Councilmember Ross. Oh, is that you? Sorry.
It's me, actually.
The button, sorry.
Well, this will be fun.
Ms. Deputy City Manager.
I just wanted to comment a little bit on the budget. When we first planned to do this project, we'd hoped to start early enough that we could have the whole project wrapped up in time for your budget deliberations. For one reason or another, that didn't happen. Some of it has to do with just council schedule being very full right now. But we don't want to miss an opportunity, should we identify any short-term considerations for the council, to at least touch base with you in that July-September timeframe. That doesn't mean that we will have any recommendations. I just want you to know that's why we plugged in that opportunity. But that will also be a good time for us to just do a progress report on where we're at. So that's where the, how we ended up with the schedule.
I'll ask a quick question, too. When are you having discussions with the Public Safety Committee? I mean, I know you're going to ask us the question later about the how, but when?
Yep. We will be at the meeting on Thursday. And then we're hoping to ask you how often and in what capacity we should be engaging the Public Safety Committee.
Okay.
Before, so we're actually to the point where we would turn over to start asking you questions, but I want to make sure there's no other questions for us before we do that.
We've got one more. Councilmember Valderrama.
Yes. First of all, thank you for the presentation, and if you could go back two slides. Wait, that one, yes. Okay. First of all, just for the background, since we have four new council members in the Public Safety Committee, last year it was Tom Odell, Bob Keller and myself, and unanimously had supported this project, especially looking forward to the needs of what's going to be taking place in the town center in the future were the main considerations. The one caveat that was unanimous also was our concern as to the cost of services already right now. Public, the police is second to EFOR at the right neck and neck, and there was a real concern of how we're going to be able to look at efficiencies. And I don't see efficiencies on this key task list here. I see performances, I see deployment. Hopefully, in looking at deployments and that, you'll be looking at efficiencies, because we're going to be going back to all of our departments to say, hey, how can we gain some efficiencies, including the police and fire, to see that's a big consideration. And EFOR has already started on some of those discussions and reviews on their own, just seeing the demands that the cities are under. But that's going to be a concern, and overtime is big for everybody to look at, how do we manage overtime more efficiently? And there, in the deployment, you can really look at providing from your lessons learned from Kirkland and other cities, that we really want to take advantage, because being on the east side, they'll have a lot of similarities that we can leverage into it. But just to make sure that you were aware of where we were with the last Public Safety Committee, and then this Public Safety Committee, Karen, Marianne, Chris, Ross and myself then will be engaging and coming to the full council. Thank you.
Ms. Deputy City Manager.
Yes. One more comment. We didn't state this overtly, but the council did ask us to also do a make versus buy analysis on the police services contract and to evaluate if it may make sense to move policing in-house or come up with a different model. That is also a part of the contract with Burke, excuse me. I do want to assure the King County folks in the audience that we are quite happy with the King County services, and I anticipate they will still come in at one of the better values, but that is being looked at at your request.
I have a question. Am I back up again?
Yeah, Councilmember Valderrama.
So isn't that what you're looking at, and again, reiterating that we're happy with King County versus our own, or you're also going to be looking at hybrids such as renting the policemen from Redmond or another station?
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Go ahead.
So we have two different questions we want to ask you. We've alluded to both of them already. We kind, we want to understand what issues you want us to explore through this study. Some of those have just come up, and we also want to understand what role you want the Public Safety Committee to play throughout this project. So I'd start with the first question, and just understanding how the community is changing and any of the internal workings of the city. What issues would you, or questions do you have that you'd like us to explore through this study?
Councilmember Stewart.
I'm going to assume that all this is just part of it, but for me, looking at all the comparables, right, in terms of call volumes, number of officers on at any given time, I just want to make sure that we, while we are a very safe city, and I don't anticipate that necessarily changing, I think it's important to make sure that we are appropriately staffed and that we have the right people and the right number of people, so we're not in a situation where somebody needs help and there's no one around to provide that. So for me, looking at all those comparables, I like that, maybe just because I'm a numbers person, but those would be the things I'd really be interested in seeing, so, thank you. As long as you don't make me do any more math, just do it for me, please.
Valderrama.
Yeah, what issue that's hard to control, we have the epidemic of opioids and heroin, which have the byproduct of the mail thefts and the break-ins to the cars that they're looking for the quick money. And I don't know if it's possible to look into some additional cameras that could be put up in some of the neighborhoods as well to assist into that process, because there's seems to be not much that the police can do with the rash of it taking place, but at least identifying the repeated perpetrators that are coming out. And as Pam said, we're known as a safe city, and they're looking at us as a soft, easy target, and most people even lock their doors. Thank you.
Councilmember Ritchie.
Thank you. I am from Klahani, and we have, it's something we've talked about. I know I spoke to the chief about this, that the idea of looking at essentially a, a lot of police officers, I think all the police officers come out of this building, or they're, you know, out in the field. I would love to see, just to give an idea, something like a storefront, even just a nine to five, just come in. I know there's space available at the Klahani Shopping Center right now. Just something where we were much more, not just necessarily driving by, but actually way more in contact with what's going on at the community level, walking out of the QFC, going by the Starbucks, and you've got a, you know, a Samamish police office right there, manned, or womaned, humaned, you know, from nine to five, something like that. And I don't know what that staff would look like, but just that kind of interaction, I think would go a long way towards growing that community trust and making sure people know that, frankly, we see on the roads a lot. I mean, it's kind of a drive-by thing, right? And where do they go and what's going on versus, I have a question, how does this work? I heard this, my kid's school heard that. You know, that kind of one-on-one exchange of information, I think is done really better. You know, some of the call times I've seen in terms of people waiting on hold, walk in and have a conversation with somebody, and that's, that's that regional-based, you know, maybe one up here by the Safeway, you know, Safran's probably got some openings, right? You know, something like that, where we could actually have folks in the field more. I think that would be beneficial to a community policing spirit. Thank you.
Councilmember Marin.
Well, my comment goes back to the community meeting, safety meeting that we had at Lake Washington at the Eastlake School. And they brought up that the Eastlake, the junior high, Inglewood Junior High was the largest junior high in the Lake Washington School District. And I can only assume, and this is just an assumption, that probably the one that we have on the plateau is in Samamish is probably, probably, probably one of the biggest ones for Issaquah as well. So I would like to see us look at having an officer, a community officer in the junior highs, as well as the high schools. We already have them in the high schools, but I'd like to see that added on, even on a part-time and full-time, but that costed out for the junior highs as well.
Councilmember Ross.
Yeah, Councilmember Stewart talked a little bit about benchmarking, which is really good, but I'd like to take that one step further and understand what types of crimes or activities are driving the most resources. So when we are benchmarking, we're trying to break it down to apples to apples, because we've got to be very careful not to simply say at a high level, this is our benchmark and the decision-making model. So break it down further. For example, domestic violence takes two officers, some crimes take more time to investigate, et cetera, et cetera. If we can break it down to get a little smarter on the numbers and have a better comparison and assessment of our resource needs, that'd be great.
And along those lines of numbers specifically, one of our councilmembers up here, Councilmember Ritchie, had asked about, you know, a storefront somewhere other than just here. If you, I'm just, I guess I'm trying to understand how you're going to roll that in. If you, if you are going to present that to council, are you going to show us what that looks like under our current model with the King County Sheriff's Department and in-house and a partnership? How are we going to see what that looks like?
Could I jump in here real quick? I think before we get to the storefront conversation, we have to look at the geography of the city and the challenges that we are having responding to calls. If everyone's called out to the north end and we have a major emergency in the south end, we are experiencing some issues getting from point A to point B. So I think that will be step one. And then, once they report out on that, we will talk about potential solutions. And we have, at least internally, talked about what would it look like to relocate officers or personnel to another part of the city, and what would that look like? We haven't quite gotten to the put up a storefront just yet.
Sure.
But we are, we are talking about that issue.
I just wanted to make sure for any, you know, these additional items that we're looking at, whether it's an SRO for the middle schools or whatever, that we're looking at it under all those different iterations of what are, okay.
That's correct. And keep in mind, like the other strategies we've done recently, we will be back in front of both the Public Safety Committee and the council regularly to let you know where we're at. Ultimately, we'd like to adopt a plan that identifies your priorities, which will inform future budgets. Keep in mind, this is a long-range plan. Not everything needs to be done right now. We will help advise you on priorities, and then we'll be able to respond as the city continues to change.
So another question here. When we get this information, will that report also look at City Hall, like space constraints that we have currently, and whether or not in the future we're going to need to look for additional space anyway? I know we've got both our police department and the sheriff's department in City Hall currently.
So we have actually already done that work. We did it last year, and we have a couple of options that we'll be bringing forward later. But we are in need of a basic remodel to our police department. We have a front entryway issue where we don't have a place for our police officers to conference with citizens. You may have noticed those conferences are happening in the hallway. We also have run out of just space, which we think we can actually solve some of that problem with reconfiguration. And beyond that, and I don't want to get too far into these details, but just so you know, when this building was built, it was built with the intent of being able to expand the police department to the second floor. So there is framing in the wall to actually put a stairway from floor one to floor two. That begs the question, where do the people on floor two go, which is a bigger conversation? So we have done that analysis. It's not directly a part of the scope of work, but it's something we need to talk about in the next 12 to 18 months.
Good. Councilmember Stewart.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I forgot to ask in the numbers, one of the things I find interesting, and I've heard this in the past, one of our biggest complaints in the city is speeding, which I find ironic since one of the other biggest complaints is traffic. So I would like to understand, because those two things seem somewhat mutually exclusive. So it would be nice to understand if we, if everybody's sitting in traffic, where and who is speeding, because I think that is important for us to understand, all kidding aside. It's important for us to understand because I think that we do have a speeding problem, and if we do, then maybe our traffic problem is more condensed or more localized or something. I think it will inform our other issues, and I think that will be helpful to understand that on a, on a.
Those are the intersections we want to fail.
Yeah. And I mean, but all kidding aside, 2,800 speeding tickets, you know, that's, that's not nothing. And again, to understand how does that compare to other locales, is that low or high, and really times of day, locations, I think that will be important to understand that. And then on the community policing side, I think a lot of people brought that up, but are there ways we can do that, where we can gain efficiencies, right, where we can get more police involvement in ways that aren't necessarily as in much of an increase in costs, right, to really improve just the overall communication and integration there? So those would be the things I'd be interested in. Thanks.
So I don't have any more lights up for that particular question. Do you want to move to the second question?
Yes, thank you.
Great. Does anyone have any questions on the role for the Public Safety Committee?
Let me, my microphone's not on. We normally use our committees to preview information and do some early vetting for the council. We would anticipate doing that here as well, with final recommendations certainly coming to the council for full discussion. Since this is a large study, I just wanted to make sure we talked about expectations and role of committee, if anyone had any thoughts.
I don't have any lights, but I would concur with that, that most of the work would, oh, well, after I started talking.
Go ahead, please.
Yeah, as long as we're getting, you know, those regular check-ins, it looks like, and I don't have the timeline up in front of me, I can scroll back here. Our next check-in is in July. If through the committee, we can just get reports out to the council in committee reports, then we can just kind of keep abreast of what's going on before July rolls around. So, sorry, Councilmember Stewart.
Yeah, so I like the idea of using the committees, right, because I think you can dig a little deeper in committee and vet some things out. One thing we might want to consider, I know we've been very efficient and streamlined in our meetings, which I love, of a lot of the reports just being attached and we don't go over it. I'd like to, for something this big, if the Public Safety Committee feels like it's something we should take five or 10 minutes to talk about, I'd like to encourage that on something like this. So definitely let you guys do the deep diving, but maybe give us a little bit more than just, hey, there's a report attached. So that would be kind of what I'd like to ask for, so.
Councilmember Ritchie.
Yeah, I have not attended a Public Safety Committee meeting, and I think I will in the future, just based on, it sounds like it. If I can, if that doesn't break OPMA, but at any rate, my, my hope would be more to the deputy city manager's statement, that we have, I like to call it choice within limits, you know, that we have some semblance of, this is not necessarily one option or two options, but maybe four or five options, maybe one that's, we think, or the committee thinks is too expensive, but it needs to be heard by the council as a whole, not necessarily knocked before it gets here. And also on the other side of that, too, that we should really peel way back. I just, I would like to see more options, more well-vetted options, and I don't, again, I'm not sure if that's the committee's job. I would hope that it would be, to kind of flush out some great options, maybe some are better than others, but bring them all forward and, you know, give us your opinions on them, because you guys have done the deep dive, and I'd value your opinion on them, of course. So I'd like to be able to see more. Thanks.
Ms. Deputy City Manager.
Actually, Tom Hornish has a comment.
He's still there?
Yes, thank you. Hopefully you can hear me. I actually want to go back up to the first question as well, just to get the way in. And Kristin, it's nice that you've had the background on the human services study, but I guess one of the things I'd like to see is how can we incorporate and integrate the human services with some of the issues that the police are dealing with? Then the two that come to mind to me right away are mental health and domestic violence, and there may be others. So that's just one question I'd like for you to consider in this study. As to the role, the second question, I'd like the Public Safety Committee to do as much as they can and bring it back. Just, and I think that's why we have committees, and we have to defer to them to some extent, but if there are issues that not a, if it's not clear as to the three members that are on the committee, then I think it needs to come back, and we've had that before where there's a split, and then the committee moves forward, and then you come back to the council, and then things kind of blow back up, because there's a definite split as to thinking as to what needs to be done. So when there's a close call, I would, I would suggest that the Public Safety Committee bring it back to the full council.
I don't have any more questions up here. Any other final comments?
No. Next up, we are headed to the Public Safety Committee for a little bit of a deeper dive on Thursday, and then we'll be off and running. So thank you for your time this evening.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right. We will move to our final topic for the evening, which is the 2018 Non-Motorized Program project selection.
Well, while everyone's transitioning, if there is one change we are going to make in the near future, we are just going to start calling this the Sidewalk Gap Program, because that is actually what it is. It's been called the Non-Motorized Program for some time. All right, we have Andrew and Jed from our Public Works Department, and they're going to take us through a short presentation on our gap projects and identify the top four priorities. Tonight, we would. Tonight, we would like to hear from you about where your priorities lie. Andrew, Jed, I'll turn it over to you.
Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. We're here to present a couple of alternative projects for our non-motorized or sidewalk gap project. This is going to be for this budget cycle for the 2017-2018 funds. Right now, we're kind of looking at the rollover funds from, that are unspent from 2017, seeing if we can apply, you know, want to apply it for this year as well. Annually, we get $750,000 allocated for this program currently. And we have, right now, unspent 750 from last year with another 750 budgeted for this year. And with that, I was going to turn it over to Jed Ireland. He's the engineer that we have who manages the project, keeps the list up to date and is also presenting the candidates for this year.
Thanks, Andrew. Okay, this is the 2018 Sidewalk Gap Project, or Program. So what it does is it really, literally just completes gaps in the pedestrian and bicycle facilities on our streets, usually because development or capital improvement projects have kind of filled in and created a small gap that we can fix as part of this program. Priority projects are ranked according to a set of defined criteria, which I'll go into a little bit later. And typically, the way the program has worked is each budget cycle, the council selects a project and sometimes more than one. To start with the background here, I've got a map that was last updated in 2012, which is titled Non-Motorized Transportation Program. It has a list of locations of about 50 projects. Not all of these are traditional sidewalk gap projects. Some of them are larger and are actually capital improvement projects. But beginning in 2007, the six-year transportation improvement program began to include a line item for the sidewalk gap projects. These are the ones that we're going to be highlighting for this year. There's four of them. The first is Southeast 24th Street and it's by Beaver Lake Park. Second is 212th Avenue Southeast and it's beside E. Bright Creek Park, just to the north. The third is Northeast Inglewood Hill Road and the gap is at the 216th Avenue Northeast Roundabout and about 500 feet to the west. And the fourth is Southeast 48th Street between Iskow Pine Lake Road and 227th Place This exhibit just basically shows the relative locations of these four projects. In red is the project location. In yellow, it shows where capital projects or developments have already improved the sidewalks. Those are in yellow. Now I'm going to go a little bit into more depth for each of these projects and how they stack up. The first one is Southeast 24th Street, 244th Avenue Southeast to 248th. It's classified as a local street. It's long at over 1,300 feet in length and that's why the cost estimate is pretty high, also the terrain, but it's over $2 million. And it has a high priority score. Partly, it has to do with the fact that it's a high priority in the Trails, Bike Ways and Paths Plan, which is here listed as TBP. That plan is from 2004.
Sorry, TBP?
TBP. Trails, Bike Ways and Paths Plan, from 2004. And the priority score also reflects trailing accident histories, trailing three years. And it also weighs heavily on pedestrian generators, like schools, parks, transit or other facilities. This project has, there's five parcels that are along the frontage and there is, there's a small possibility these could develop and potentially have the developer build the frontage. But because they're smaller, most, four out of five, or less than half an acre, it's unlikely that any single one would be triggered, doing frontage improvements, but there could be a larger plan of sale or project that could potentially do it. So we consider it to be a low probability that private development would pay for this frontage. The second project, 212th Avenue Southeast, it starts right where the sidewalk ends at E. Bright Creek Park and goes 620 feet to the north. This is a collector arterial, 620 feet length. Cost estimate is $870,000. This is the total cost. And is that a question?
We do have a question up here. Councilmember Stewart.
Yeah, can you talk a little bit more about the priority score and where the, the data for sort of the gaps for walking to school fall into place? That, again, as that kind of ties into some of our other priorities where we have a lot of people driving kids to school, so anything that's on kind of a key route or within, you know, I guess.
A walking route.
Well, a walking route and just looking at distance from schools. When I look at these, while they clearly all look really important, I mean, we have a lot of gaps that I think need to be filled, but filling some of those gaps may solve some of our other problems or reduce some of our other problems as well. And so I'm just wondering where those, where that score, how much that accounts for the distance from the schools and where those school gaps are.
Okay, sure, I'll address that. So it does weigh pretty heavily on the proximity to school and there's points given for quarter-mile, half-mile radius, three-quarters of a mile and within a mile. And so it is reflected in the point totals.
Because like, if I look at the E. Bright Creek one, while I would love to see that filled personally, because I bike and walk along that area, that is not a walk-to-school route, as much as I would love to see that, that gap filled, so.
So I'll, I'll put a caveat on that one specifically, is that there is a, the closest school to that area is Creekside and the kids get a bus. If the sidewalk goes in, they lose the bus, which means it's actually, you could have more parents driving their kids to school.
Right.
As a caveat.
So, yeah, so I guess, you know, I can think of a lot of places where there are gaps in the sidewalk that may facilitate more kids walking than any of these, so. And that's why I want to understand more the priority scoring methodology, so.
Well, for instance, if this, if the project is within a quarter-mile of a school in kind of the official school walk-to-zone for an elementary, it would get 20 points. So that'd be, that'd be a large amount. It would get a much smaller amount, maybe 10 points if it's within three-quarters of a mile, which this one is. The one just north of E. Bright Creek Park is about three-quarters of a mile from Creekside. So the points are reflected, but it's just this gross measuring tool. So it's kind of a snapshot and there's just a relative ranking.
Is that first one close to a school? I'm, I'm having trouble visualizing.
No, it's by Beaver Lake Park. It's right across Beaver Lake Park.
Yeah.
It's on a hill. There's a, there's a blind hill there.
Do you want to talk about why the project number one scores so high?
Yeah, well, so it looks really high. That isn't the only criteria for making a priority, but it is right next to a park and also it had four accidents. And so the way that this scores is that in the trailing three years, every accident gets five points, so five times four is 20, I'm doing the math. And so these ones, there weren't accidents that caused any injuries, but there were two that hit parked objects or stationary objects. And there were two vehicle-on-vehicle accidents in this corridor in the, in the trailing three years, over these project limits. So this one scores relatively high, just because of the trailing three-year accidents. It's, it's within a mile, so it probably only got five points for proximity to school compared to Discovery Elementary. Or, yes, Discovery. So going back to 212th, I would, so I would talk about that it is within three-quarters of a mile of Creekside Elementary. And a priority score of 55 is, it's on the high end. It doesn't look high compared to 80, but just the way that the numbers work, accidents really tend to add up. It is on the Trails, Bike Ways and Paths Plan. Now, there's two large parcels that are over two and a half acres that are, that this fronts. So these have a high likelihood of developing and being required to improve the frontage. But we have no idea what that timeline would be, but this would be the most likely to develop, with private development building that 620 feet of sidewalk and bike lane. The third project is Northeast Inglewood Hill Road, from the 216th Avenue Northeast Roundabout to 213th Place Northeast. This is a minor arterial. It gets more points in the ranking because of that. It's, the length is short at 500 feet. 742,000 is very typical for the non-motorized projects going back in history. It has four parcels along it that are unlikely to develop. They're relatively small and they've already, they're already part of a greater track, so it's unlikely, or we don't expect that any more development would pay for any of this frontage. And it's also on the Trails, Bike Ways and Paths Plan. Now, the fourth one is Southeast 48th Street at the south end of the city, from Iskow Pine Lake Road Southeast to 227th Place Southeast. It's a local street, but it does have a lot of traffic for being a local street, because it serves a lot of subdivisions. The length is really high, you know, over 1,400 linear feet. And the price at 1.6 million is high because of that. It also is along wetlands, so probably three-quarters of it has already been developed and there's been, nothing has been done on the frontage along these wetlands. Maybe a quart of it could potentially be developed. So this is, this is a candidate where the, the city would likely be developing, developing the sidewalk gaps at some point in the future.
I have a couple of questions on this one. So I went out and drove this area just to kind of get a look and then I came back and I looked at King County Parcel Viewer, just to see who owned what along. And I know this is a strange road, because there's like Iskow on one side and Smamish on the other. So I was looking specifically on the Smamish side. There is an LLC that owns a large swath of that land. Is that where the wetland is? It looked like a retention pond there, but there's a City of Smamish sign there.
Okay, I think Andrew wants to.
But I mean, an LLC owning something looked, looked a little suspect.
True. There's, on the south side, we just had a developer, you know, install some frontages along the Iskow side. And then just to the east of that is a large, I kind of think that's the LLC, it's kind of a too-large track.
No, the LLC's on the Smamish side.
It's on the Smamish side.
Yeah, it's on the Smamish side. So it's on the north side of the street.
As you come off.
It's like Milo LLC.
Those are possibility. I think mainly the request on this one, we're looking, is actually on the south side. So where the gaps are, it's the easiest to construct.
You're looking at putting the sidewalk gaps on, on the side where Iskow's got all the frontage improvements going on.
Correct, yeah. This is, this is mainly on the south side that we're presenting today. The north side, probably be a little more costly, just because if you've been out there, you saw the topography, so there's a lot more issues where we have to deal with trees and walls. And just because, because of that and right-of-way acquisition, we were, you know, looking at the south side, just because of the easier filling in the gaps.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, and I think that's a good point for me to highlight, is that these all are showing costs for putting sidewalk and bike lane on one side. And we've always picked the side where the shortest gap is or other considerations. But for all of these projects, it's always in the shortest gap location, just for these four.
Jed, can you speak to the fact that number four was just added to the list? Some of these others have been on the list for some time. Is that what I understand from our conversation today?
Yeah, it's correct. The, the first three have been on the, the map of 50 projects. They've been in discussion for a long time. Southeast 48th Street does not show up on the Trails, Bike Ways and Paths Plan. So this is something that we've looked at in the last, within the last few weeks. And it doesn't, the priority score looks low at 30. And the reason for that is fortunately, there's not a lot of accidents, but there's also not a lot of pedestrian generators. Just the way that these are ranked, this way of ranking, it doesn't have high proximity to, to parks or schools, transit or other features.
I might also add, the Trails, Bike Ways and Paths Plan was done in 2004, so it's an, it's a dated document at this point. As we continue to work on the TMP, all of these gap projects will be looked at again, likely others added and reprioritized. As we've talked, however, these four will likely still remain very high. So if there is an opportunity to complete a project this year, we would recommend doing so. This, this list isn't going to change. There will just be more added and some additional analysis.
We've got a bunch of questions before we move on. Councilmember Moran.
Number four, so. So for, for its. It's priority score of 30. It's not near a school. Is that correct?
Yeah, there is a, there's a private school nearby and so I think it got five points for that.
Okay.
It's within three-quarters of a mile.
Because I'm just wondering, I mean, I'm, I'm just struggling with the, we have, we hear from so many people about areas where we've got gaps close to schools, that we would spend that kind of money for someplace where that isn't near a school, that isn't a walking route. That's, I'm struggling with that one.
Good point, man. The other side's Iskow.
Okay, Councilmember Stewart.
Yeah, I'm just wondering how we don't have the gaps over by Pine Lake Middle School in Sunny Hills, right around the roundabout there? How that, how those didn't end up having a high priority score? And that just seems like such a, a key area where we've got a lot of kids who maybe would walk or could walk if those gaps were filled, so I'm just curious.
So in regard to those two schools, we do have sidewalks, most of Iskow Pine Lake, and then when we start getting close to the roundabout, there's some gaps. That'll actually be looked at with the Iskow Pine Lake project, because it starts with the 42nd, or 30sec, 24th, sorry, excuse me, 32nd Roundabout and work its way south. That's where a lot of the gaps are right now that we have requests for on Iskow Pine Lake, is mainly by the Montessori School and then going south. And then, of course, we have Connor Jarvis filling in a safer routes to school portion from their project to the north to the fire station.
So those are part of Phase One?
So those are all part of the Phase One, which is, as approved by council, we're going into design. We're just right now negotiating with our consultant on a contract to come to council with.
And then, if I may, Kristi, just for my education, why do sidewalks cost so bloody much?
Well, you know, I would say that, you know, these cost estimates, it's kind of a gut check. There's a lot of unknowns. I mean, we're assuming a certain amount of detention and treatment for these, but we really don't know until we do the survey how much walls we're going to have. We don't know until we do exploration, some geotechnical.
I mean, these are the right ballpark, so that, I mean, I'm not, I'm actually not questioning your estimates. I'm wondering, what is it that goes into building a sidewalk that makes it? I mean, I know the, the other one that was done on 212th was a couple million, right?
It was a, it was a half million.
Half million dollars.
But that was a wetland mitigation that was done there.
So that's what I'm just curious, is what all goes into it that makes them cost so much?
Well, these are not just construction. I mean, some of the projects like 212th, non-motorized, that was done down by Southeast 24th Street, that was, the construction was 570,000. But the total project cost was 750,000, if you look at all of the fees and, you know, for, for the consultant and for purchasing right-of-way. This one, all these projects have right-of-way that has to be purchased, because typically the half-street right-of-way is only 30 feet. And to get to our new standard, we need an additional five feet beyond that. There's a cost for that. Some of these projects have wetlands, like Southeast 48th Street. And so there's an estimate that goes in and it, it adds up. These might also be conservative figures, of course, and, and so the, the project will vary once we have more information.
I think one, one other aspect in regard to engineering-wise, when we just build a sidewalk, we're not adjusting grades of a road, so we're stuck with what we have next to it. So if we start going into a hillside, we're not adjusting the whole roadway like we would with a capital project. We're just going to have to cut in, build a wall, and that usually drives up cost as well.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Ritchie.
Thank you. To what Deputy City Manager was saying, so we have $1.5 million set aside right now to act on, not tonight, but, you know, probably our next council mayor, one coming up, and you're asking us to make a decision as to one or if we want to do all four, we have to find the money to do that, that kind of process. Is that where that's, this is going? You're kind of giving us some choices here and we're trying to get it to 1.5 million, or we need to find money to do?
It's, it's kind of open-ended, whether the council wants to do one, two, or up to four, just do design, there's multiple choices. I will defer to the Deputy City Manager. I think she was going to step in and make a comment of that as regard, as well. But we're looking for direction now to where we can then come back to council with a formal resolution to start the project.
You typically do select one project per biennium, sometimes two. We don't have the resources right now to take on more than that, considering the other projects in the queue for Public Works. We always bring forth kind of the top four or five projects so that, that you can choose. If I may, can you go back to the map so we can talk a little bit about 24th? So project number one is Southeast 24th. And what I want to point out there, you're probably familiar with that corridor that runs along adjacent to Beaver Lake Park and then turns into West Beaver Lake Drive. That entire zone is being looked at comprehensively as part of your TMP. I would advise some caution about selecting that project, considering it's likely to be part of a bigger project down the road. This is one of those things where we don't want to make an investment to turn around five years from now and rip it all out and start over. You haven't funded that project, so I do want to, you know, fully disclose that, but that is one of our major corridors and trouble areas we're looking at. So I wanted to flag that for you. that for you.
Can I?
Yeah, if you've got one.
Yeah, I just wanted to add that I appreciate that the information, these are all clearly important sidewalk projects, but from Dad of Two Kids and, you know, doorbelling quite a bit last year, the thing that I heard most of, and maybe this is hopefully something we can talk about as part of the Transportation Master Plan, and I think many of us have spoken to it, a lot of it up here, is that I see every morning kids walk into school across busy roads alongside streets leading to dirt trails. I'm thinking of Issaquah Beaver Lake, you know, I'm thinking of 32nd right now. My son goes to Beaver Lake Junior High, and watching those kids line up, or, you know, parents dropping them off, pulling 360s, trying to get them turned around, and there's no sidewalks on several of the side streets leading to the junior high, in this case, that I'm thinking of just because it's my everyday. And I would hope that before we make a decision on this, that at least we would consider that we might get more updated information, maybe more relevant information, as part of the TMP, as it relates to where I heard a lot of focus in the past six months, which is schools, walking, connectivity, and the idea of trying to get cars off the roads during rush hours and bell times. And if our sons and daughters know, and we, our parents, know that they can actually walk safely, once those crossing guards are done, and then down the sidewalk, down those side streets, frankly, I heard a lot of that. And I think, as far as I'm concerned, that's what this should be focused on. Not to say these other areas aren't important, but I would love to know, or at least hope that part of the TMP process maybe can give us more points towards schools, or the areas around schools, if possible. And that's just something I think is really important to me as a parent and as a council member.
The TMP definitely places an emphasis on the safety analysis, particularly around schools.
Okay.
I guess we should add here that one option you have as well is not to do a project and to defer your resources to sometime in the future, once your TMP is done.
Good to be reminded of that.
Councilmember Ross.
Could you please move it back to the slide on the cost, the summary of the four? Thanks. You talked a little bit about, these are real early estimates, gut estimates, no survey, no design, preliminary design, but then I look at the numbers, 2183, 1676, 742. How do we get that level of precision? Why not 2,200, 2,700, 740?
Okay, I'll answer that. You know, we look at over 40 items, typical construction items, so we are looking at a lot of things, but they're mostly driven by geometry and maybe looking at LiDAR, you know, just, you know, survey that's available on the webs, on the website, excuse me, for the county. So there is some information and there's some judgment, and so these are, these are close, but there's big, there's big guesses about what are we going to be doing with the water and with infiltration? Is it possible? So that's why, maybe it's misleading because it has digits in there, but these are rounded. But it's because we're looking at all those items, we end up having to round, because we are looking at many items. It's just not a cost per linear foot. We're actually looking at the design items going into it, see if it makes sense with the geometry and what we've measured.
Typically, when we do our estimates, we do round up to the thousands. We don't want to go any close, any lower than that, just because of, like Jed was saying, all the items. Thousands is a little more easier to analyze us, you know, for us, we're looking at the engineering aspect, because we do take into account right-of-way. We look at, you know, engineering costs, possibly, you know, rounding up for, if we do look at environmental, you know, when we calculate it, we're looking at what we see with our construction costs, you know, $50 a square foot for sidewalk, concrete, you know, we'll put that up, but then we'll always round up to 1,000, just for that rounding and precision.
Okay, that's your, you do the math and you round up to the thousands as your practice.
I've got Deputy Mayor Hornish that wanted to make a comment.
Yeah, I got one question and then kind of weigh in on my thoughts. Jesse, which project was it that you said was, we don't want to do an interior backup in five years? I wasn't following that one.
I was talking about the Southeast 24th Street project. It's the sidewalk gap that's immediately adjacent to Beaver Lake Park.
Number one.
Number one. Yeah, so what I was just pointing out, there is no project there yet, but as part of your TMP, we are looking carefully at that entire stretch and West Beaver Lake Drive as a corridor that is going to need some attention at some point. And so my concern was, if that becomes a future capital project, I would hate to put infrastructure in place now that needs to be removed and reconfigured later.
All right, gotcha. Thank you. That's very helpful. Actually, it helped make my decision, or my thought even clearer. You know, these are all great projects, and we want to have sidewalks for people to use, and a lot of people do walk and everything. However, you know, we are, I'm very concerned about our ongoing budget discussions that are going to be coming up here, and what we're talking about for roads. There was a comment that said earlier that we have money set aside for these gap projects. I want to clarify, in my mind, we don't have any money set aside. We have money budgeted. That does not mean we have to spend it. 750,000 a year, five years, we've got about $4 million that we can use elsewhere if we need to, and I think we're going to need it. I think we're going to need it to do more on what is our number one priority, our roads and traffic and cars. We are a bedridden community and people are commuting off. Having said all that, I think it'd be better to wait for everything and stop, don't do anything in '17 and '18, or '18, until we get the TMP done. However, I like the one alternative, to maybe pick one project and design it and kind of go from there. And given that Southeast 24th, as to what you just said, is something that may not be a good use of money, we can have the developers pay for number two, and on 48th, it just seems kind of a lower priority, which it actually is. I would pick number three if we want to at least design one to have go forward, and then we can figure out if we have money to fund it in '18 as we get through our other discussions.
Jesse, did you have anything else?
No, I just wanted, on Southeast 24th, project number one, the other thing we should point out is there's a soft-surface trail just immediately kind of inside the park boundary, so pedestrians do have an opportunity to get off of 24th and have a safe route. Cyclists, however, road cyclists do not, they stay on the road at that point.
So I have a question specific to that one, because I know we've heard a lot about that, and there's kind of that hill that makes it very challenging to see, which may be a product of some of the accidents that we've seen there. So yes, there is that woodchip trail that's on the other side. Is there a crosswalk anywhere for people to get over? And if we can't do a project, is there the possibility of adding the paint for a crosswalk so people can get across to that soft-surface trail?
So I believe the 244th Avenue Southeast Non-Motorized, add, added a crosswalk at that one intersection across from Penny Lane, I believe the development is. But then going up the hill, there isn't, and there's, the shoulders are almost nonexistent.
Yep.
And it is steep, so it is a little bit difficult for bicyclists.
Sure, but for folks that are pedestrians, there are sidewalks further up, and I don't know, sorry, what that cross street is that, it's 244th, never mind, isn't it, further up?
Further up the hill is 248th.
248th. So is there the possibility of adding anything at that point for pedestrians to cross over?
We would probably have to look, I'm looking to the two of you, at the site distance issue once you get up there, correct?
Correct, and recently, there was a portion of the roadway that was lowered by about six inches by a developer from 248, between 248th and 246th, I believe. They were not required to do frontage improvements on 24th, but they were required for site distance to lower the intersection of the roadway, so they did flatten out the roadway to improve site distance. In regard to, Penny Lane put in the crosswalk on the, a little farther to the west, but in regard to the area between, we don't have, that's the gap, we don't have the sidewalks on either side. The south side on the park is where we have topography issues. The north side, we have tree and topography, but it is now a flatter roadway all the way up to 248th, at least on site distance issues.
I think what we could commit to is going out there and looking at if there's an opportunity for another safe crossing.
Yeah.
I hate to engineer at council meetings without sending the...
Likely would be, yeah, it's a little tight on 248th, and then there's also right-of-way issues. There's a private tract where the road kind of does a little S curve before it gets onto the 24th that we would have to look at as well.
And I think the Deputy Mayor mentioned it, for project number two, I suspect that developers are actually going to take care of that gap for us. All of those property owners on that side came in here asking to be upzoned, which tells me, yeah, for a docket request, they came in here for a docket request, asking for an upzone, which tells me that they're likely to sell at some point in the future. So I think we're going to see developers put in frontage improvements there, so that one would kind of be taken care of at some point in the near future.
That was on number two, you said?
Yes. 212th. Yeah, that's, that gap is right where all those property owners came in. Southeast 48th, I was, I was out there. I understand where the scoring comes from, and I think we heard about people walking for transit, but there isn't any transit service out there. Is that what I understand?
That's correct.
Okay. All right. We've got a few more questions here. Jesse, did you have something else or no?
Oh, I'm bad tonight, sorry.
Okay, that's okay. Councilmember Stewart.
Yeah, you mentioned on project number one along by Beaver Lake that there were accidents, but if I heard you correctly, they were just auto-to-auto accidents, correct?
The, two of them were, and two of them were hitting inanimate objects, or parked objects, or stationary objects.
So can I understand why would adding a sidewalk help with that?
It comes up a lot actually during development, too, because when we look at pedestrian safety, we have to look at accidents in the, you know, what are the likelihood of an accident or a pedestrian getting struck? And if there's a history of motor vehicle accidents, that increases the likelihood for that possible pedestrian vehicle accident. And so the installation of a curb gutter sidewalk, raising a sidewalk, or separating it from the roadway, that improves that safety, and that is one of those criteria that we don't just look at in the wire, right, our scoring, but if we were to go safe routes-to-school routes or any of the state programs, they look at it the same way.
Okay, and I guess to Mayor Malchow's point there, there's a path, but for a bicyclist, then that would probably be more of an issue, because there's a place for pedestrians to walk safely along there. Now I, now I finally picture where that is. Yay! Thanks.
I don't have any more buttons up here, but I don't know if you've gotten much direction from us.
I have more slides.
Oh, great, keep going.
So this is our recommendation, let's see, that one or more projects would be selected, we'd get the nod to inter-design and pursue construction. And then here's the budget, we've already talked about that. And, you know, we do have a recommendation that it, you know, Inglewood, the gap on that one is small, and that is one that's within the budget of typically, you know, a project size that we would do as part of the sidewalk gap program. If we did one of the larger projects or a combination, then more allocation may be required. You know, other alternatives could be that we, we design, but then we defer construction until we look at opportunities for grants. We've applied, we've had success with these different funding sources, and, you know, the Southeast 24th Street gap, we have applied for safe routes-to-school grant, but we were unsuccessful. But we could have those ready to go and then pursue those opportunities. Or of course, we could defer any selection until after the Transportation Master Plan is completed. And that's my last slide.
I don't see any more leads, but, so I have a question, because I know, you know, we as council members often hear about other gap projects, and I think Councilmember Stewart might have alluded to this to some degree with regards to schools. It seems to me, there's a gap that's been created on 32nd, which leads to Sunny Hills Elementary. I think some, we've had some frontage improvements done, and then we leave gaps, and I know there's a new, and I don't pretend I haven't driven that stretch to know where the sidewalks are and are not, but are there other projects, other than the four that were given here, that the council might consider?
You know, we don't have anything, we don't have anything presented at this time, but there are lots of good projects. These ones, just, they were ranked relatively highly. Inglewood was ranked highly in the Trails, Bike Ways and Paths Plan because it's, it was labeled a recreation corridor, and so we think that it would likely, probably still be rated highly with the new Transportation Master Plan.
I think we're working with the list that we had, the current list of, and requests that we've had more recently. That's the mainly suggestions and where we got these four projects. When we get more into the, obviously, the master, you know, Transportation Master Plan, we're going to start looking at our inventory. We did do digital scans of our roadway network last year, so we're incorporating, trying to, you know, determine where all our gaps are, which will then be analyzed further as part of the master, you know, the Transportation Master Plan, so we can then get the overall priority and ranking system going, and then looking at obviously schools first, and then going, working our way out from there.
Well, I certainly like the idea of doing at least a project. I'm cognizant of, you know, spending money that we don't need to. I mean, Southeast 24th, I think, is a concern, because we've heard about it often enough as being concerned, but I understand that I don't really want to put a sidewalk in and then have to rip it up in five years for something else that's going on when we can be informed by the TMP. I would think Inglewood Hill Road would be, I can't remember, what's the cost on that one? 742 approximately. We heard so often from our residents about these sidewalk gaps, that it almost seems dismissive to not do something, and so I think if I were going to have to pick one, that would probably be the one that I would pick. So I've got Councilmember Ritchie.
Are we doing head nods, or are we giving our two cents? How, what are we doing right now?
I think you give your two cents. We can't make any decisions at a study session, but...
My two cents is to defer to the TMP. I don't want to throw money into a project that is worthy, it is important, without doing a more thorough analysis that would be done through the TMP, and frankly, focusing on the schools, as far as I'm concerned, has not been a focus enough that we've done thus far. So I'd be minimal to wait and look at the budget and go from there.
Councilmember Moran.
I'm going to second what Council Ritchie said. I think we need to...
Next.
I think we need to take a look at the list and make the school a higher priority, and I don't want to spend money until we've done that and looked at it in the priority ranking that we'd like to see it in, I guess.
Yeah, I believe it'd be more prudent for us to wait for the TMP to be able to get a holistic view. I mean, that was the whole purpose of the TMP. It's been delayed, let's look at that, be able to then have even a prioritized ranking between that and look at how the road projects will work. My two cents are wait for the TMP. A lot of these projects that we're looking at, we've already been ourselves naysaying outside from the school stuff, whether it's because of developers coming in, or whether because of future projects, let's wait and be able to see a prioritized list and do it right.
Councilmember Ross.
I agree with all the council members, wait for the TMP and focus on getting kids safely out of their parents' cars to school. And I guess the only question I ask is, as far as grants, is there some steps that we need to take at a certain interval that we need to consider? Is it a design work on a project? And then is there a process we can go through to be timely, to get on board, to get funding, so you don't have to fully fund these, this level of cost?
Simple answer is yes. You can, everything you do, if you design projects, it allows, it opens a door for more grant opportunities. If you have a shelf-ready project, it's easier to market it, easier to sell. Also, as we mentioned last meeting with Issaquah Falls City, with the grant, you know, grant application of that, it could be the one thing that, you know, determines if you're going to get the grant or not. There's also other programs out there where if we were to do a complete street ordinance and we get that adopted by the council and the city, that, you know, there's all, those open up doors of TIB grants. They're just, depending on what's available through the state, through the federal governments, or what type of grant opportunities, you know, there's, each of them have different criteria, but obviously, moving forward, having a plan helps, having projects ready to go out for construction helps. I guess, you know, it's really all the above.
Councilmember Stewart.
First of all, I have actually never seen real-life people actually pushing someone's buttons before, so... Anyway, I would actually like to kind of caveat, I think, what everyone's saying. I would like to see a prioritized list, but I'm wondering if we might actually see something come back later this month that might be on our tip in terms of addressing some of our traffic concerns, where sidewalks may in fact be part of that solution. I don't know if that's actually being considered, but given... I don't know if that's actually being considered, but given that many of our failing intersections occur around schools at bell times, I don't know if that's something. So while I agree philosophically that I'd like to see it as a prioritized list on the TMP, I'm actually saying maybe we might see it as a prioritized tip, and not just on the TMP. So it may come up a little bit sooner than that, and we might want to consider those.
Sure. We are looking at, right now, all of the projects, intersection projects, that would result under our new concurrency program. And I anticipate those will be ready for your review in June, when the tip comes forward. And some of them are associated with school zones, are close enough, so maybe.
Right.
And then they may or may not close a gap, they may create a gap, they may do nothing with sidewalks, I'm not sure yet. So it might be worth it to wait until the tip to look at this again. That's a good point.
Okay, well, I think you've heard from the majority of council is to hold off and wait for the TMP.
Or tip.
Anything else?
We have this evening, thank you for your time.
Good.
Excellent.
Anything else from anybody? Nope. All right, we are adjourned.